Good evening. My name is Vince Noblet, President of Speedway Town Council. It is October the 10th, 2022, 7:00 PM. I want to call this meeting to order tonight. First on the agenda is Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'll just start off with introduction of the council up here. On my right, Councilor David Lindsay.
Good evening.
And on my far left is Council Bob Clutter.
Evening.
And next to me is Vice President of Town Council Gary Rags.
Good evening.
Next on the agenda is approval of the amendments. These minutes have been sent to each one of you. If there's no changes or corrections, we'll approve them as submitted.
Very good.
Hearing no changes, we'll approve them as submitted. Next item is approval of agreement with Hap Industries, Inc., doing business for the holiday decor system for holiday lights on Main Streets. Cheryl, would you like to?
Hi, Council. Seems like a really small audience tonight. So I have been charged with figuring out how to light up Main Street for the holidays. We are working with a company called Winterland Incorporated. They've been in business for 25 years and they're out of Marion, Indiana. Excuse me. However, they do light shows all across the US. San Diego Zoo, City of Orlando, more locally. They do the Grand Casino in Shelbyville. And then a few years ago, when we had the light show at IMS, they orchestrated that as well. The gentleman came and met with Rob Wetnig and I on Main Street a couple of weeks ago to kind of go over some of the challenges and logistics. And Rob was helpful with the electrical and that portion of those details. So they've been really good to be, to work with us. I wanted to show you a little bit of a visual to get some excited. Brian, if you could pull up the PowerPoint here. You could go to the next screen. On Main Street, we currently have 80 poles on Main Street. We're going to, on 50 of the poles, we're going to wrap them in the green garland that's lighted. Next screen. 10 of the poles will be adorned with the three-foot, three snowflakes that are animated. So it will look like they're falling. 10 of the poles will have five-foot snowflakes that are lighted as well. Next screen. We're going to have some lighted silhouettes along the street in some of the green spaces. We do have to allow for, if we have snow, snow areas. So there won't be a lot of these, but enough that it'll make it festive with the colored lights. So there's a snow building family. Next screen. There'll be families of reindeer kind of positioned everywhere, not everywhere, in a few spots. Next screen. Holiday shoppers. That's one of the silhouettes. And then we wanted to provide photo opportunities. So we'll have some silly reindeer that are anywhere from four feet to six feet. And then we will bring back the snowman family that we've had for the last few years. Next screen. The final thing, we're still working through some of these details, but we're hoping for a 25-foot lighted holiday tree and the roundabout. Along with that will be a three-foot sign of Merry Christmas that will have garland on it. So it still looks nice through the day. So that's a little bit of what we're planning. The items that we're looking at, we would do it on a rental basis versus purchasing them. It consists of a three-year contract. It includes them installing them and taking them down and any kind of issues throughout if something stops working. Or if someone plows through the roundabout and hits the tree, they will take care of that. The town is not responsible for that. We do have the option of changing the design of the lookout each year, staying within the agreed amount dollar that we contract to. They do use commercial-grade lights and decor. The installation time will be sometime in November. One to two days is what it will take. And I will coordinate that with code enforcement to streets, the police department, anyone who needs to be aware for safety issues. Take down, they will take it down for us sometime in January, depending on the weather. That is really all I have. Do you have any questions regarding the contract or what we've discussed?
Well, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. We approve the agreement with Hap.
Oh, sorry.
With Hap Industries Incorporated for the Christmas lights on Main Street this year. Or actually, for the next three years.
I second that motion.
Yeah, the motion and a second. So I'll open up for any discussion.
I know there's been, Rob, this may be for you, there's been some conversation about the poles on Main Street and the hardware. Have you been able to look at those? I know the council had some questions about those or?
Well, everything there has a GFI plug in the plug-ins on all the lights. We haven't checked every single one of them, but we know that there is power going there. If the light is working, that power is going to that plug.
Okay.
It's going through that plug to get to the light.
Regarding the hardware, the items that this, this company will install will not be using the hardware that's already there. They will use their own to do the snowflakes and then the, the garland, the lighted, that will actually be below the hardware because there are obviously some issues with that.
Okay, thank you.
I know the Chamber and the Lions Club have both put up other snowflakes over the years. There's still the opportunity for that to continue.
Sure, yeah. And honestly, I have not touched base with them yet because this was kind of pending. But yes, there'll be, there's still enough poles that they can still light or hang their own snowflakes. If not, my other thought was if they did not want to do that, we could offer it possibly to some of the businesses. I've encouraged them through the newsletter to decorate their storefronts, decorate their windows, to add to what the town is doing. I have had one business reach out to see if there were any limitations because they're really wanting to go out for it. So that was exciting.
Yeah, and.
That's good.
Yeah, I'm confident, just being a lion, I'm not speaking for the Lions here, but I'm confident they've, they've done it for years and they'll, they'll continue to do that.
Okay, anything else? Here, I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor of approving the agreement with Hap Industries signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries three-zero. Thank you very much, Cheryl. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2022-12, Resolution of Town Council of Town of Speedway Appropriating Proceeds of a General Obligation Bond. At this point in time, you want to give us an update on that?
Yes, certainly. This is the follow-up document to the ordinance, the bond ordinance that was approved for the general obligation bonds. At your last meeting, under Ordinance Number 1367, this matter is advertised for a public hearing this evening. The resolution states in pertinent part, there is hereby appropriated a sum not to exceed $2,305,000 out of the proceeds of the 2022 bonds, together with all investment earnings thereon, for use by the town in paying the cost of the projects and the cost of issuing the 2022 bonds, as provided in the ordinance. Such appropriations shall be in addition to all appropriations provided for in the existing budget and levy and shall continue in effect until the payment of the cost and completion of the projects. Any surplus of such proceeds shall be credited towards the proper fund as provided for under Indiana law, passed and adopted by the Speedway Town Council this 10th day of October 2022. As I mentioned, the public hearing was scheduled on this and advertised in two publications prior to today's date.
Do we need a motion before that?
Yes, sir.
So I'll go ahead and make a motion. We approve Resolution 22, excuse me, 2022-12, as presented by our council.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion concerning this resolution?
Public hearing first.
I'm going to have, I'll go ahead and, it's 7:09, I'll open the public hearing on this. Anybody wishing to speak at this time to the council, please step forward, state your name, and any information that you can, want to bring forward. Seeing nobody stepping forward at this time, I'll go ahead and close it at 7:10. So I'll go ahead. At this point in time, we get a resolution, we got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of Resolution 2022-12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries three-zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is Ordinance 1362. This is approval of the 2023 budget for the Civil Town of Speedway, second reading. Bob?
Yes, thank you. Again, the first reading on this ordinance was at your last meeting, and that was also when the public hearing occurred. This ordinance, the budgetary ordinance establishes the adopted budget at $17,610,114. 12.3 million of that is to police and fire, 941,000 to police and fire pensions, 1.9 million in debt service, 1.5 million for park, or I'm sorry, for roads and streets, and 863,000 to parks and recreation. Most of the rest goes to storm sewer and cum cap development, and then obviously salaries for town employees and various other expenses related to the business that you do. This does not allocate or include any of the water sewer utilities. Obviously, they're separate. So with that, I would respectfully recommend you pass Ordinance 1362 on second reading.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve Ordinance 167, or I'm sorry, I messed that one up. That we approve Ordinance 1362 on second reading tonight.
I'll second the motion.
Again, I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on this, being second reading?
I think before we do all these, we mentioned at last meeting, but I know Jacob can't be, be here tonight, but the hard work that he's put in, Grant's put in, all of our department heads, they weren't here last time for our first reading. But the work that they go through, this is a process that starts, I believe, in June. We have public hearings in August about it, and this is not just a one or two-night thing. This is several months of work, and we greatly appreciate the work that's been put in to all this.
Yeah, I concur.
Absolutely. I, I think it's very interesting. Basically, you know, we're basically forecasting, you know, what our expenses are going to be for the next year. And of course, in these economic times, it's very difficult to do. And I really appreciate the department heads, you know, making sure that their crystal ball is clean as can be. When you go forecasting what, what you're going to be needing for that next year. So is there any other discussion? And being that we already had a public hearing on this, we don't need to open up another one, correct, Bob?
You do not, sir.
Okay, I'm going to just go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of Ordinance 1362, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries three-zero. Okay, next item on the agenda is Ordinance 1363. It's approval of the 2023 budget for the schools of the Town of Speedway. Bob?
Yes, thank you. Again, the public hearing on this was held at your last meeting. The adopted budget for the schools for 2023 will be $29,630,318 is their total budget. And again, this is second reading, so I would respectfully recommend your approval on Ordinance 1363.
Mr. President, I move that we approve Ordinance 1363 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. This time I'll open up any discussion concerning the approval of the school's budget.
I think, the only comment I'd make similar to what David and you expressed with the town, I know the schools work really hard to manage those monies. There's not a lot of fluff there at all. They pay, we pay our teachers really well. And we get great schools and great student achievement as a result of that. Low classroom sizes, just a lot of positives. And I just, I want to commend the schools for the work they do.
I'll second that. But given that, if there's no other future, further discussion, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on Ordinance 1363. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries three-zero. Next item on the agenda is Ordinance 1364. It's the approval of the 2023 budget for Speedway Public Library. This is second reading. Bob?
Yes, sir. Also, this ordinance had its public hearing at your last meeting. The adopted budget for Speedway Public Library for 2023 is $1,437,660. And with that, I would recommend your approval on second reading of Ordinance 1364.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve Ordinance 1364 on second reading this evening.
Second.
Okay, we got approval and a motion and a second. So I'll open up any discussion concerning the budget for the Speedway Public Library.
No major comments, just appreciate that there's members of the library that are here this evening.
Yeah, absolutely. Welcome, Darcy and Carolyn. Thanks for coming. There's no other comments. I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote on 1364. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries three-zero. Okay, next item is Ordinance 1365. This is the approval of the 2023 budget for the Speedway Public Transportation. This is second reading. Bob?
Yes, thank you. Ordinance 1365 also had its public hearing at your last meeting. The adopted budget for the Speedway Public Transportation for 2023 will be $546,841. With that, I would recommend your approval on second reading.
Okay. Do you have a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve Ordinance 1365 on second reading.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion of the transportation, public transportation ordinance? Hearing none, I'm going to go ahead and call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Ordinance 1365, budget for the Speedway Public Transportation, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries three-zero. Next on the agenda is the approval of claims and utilities. Bob?
Yes, these are the claims submitted by your clerk treasurer, Jacob, who is unfortunately not present this evening. But they are through, I'm sorry, September 24th through October 7th. There are no utility adjustments this evening, so it's just this claims, claims batch.
Mr. President, I make a motion. We approve the claims as presented to us this evening.
I'll second.
Okay, again, a motion and a second. I'll open up for discussion concerning the claims as presented.
I have one question. Rob, I don't know that you know this answer, but the expense that was paid for the repair at Tenth and Lynnhurst for the water main break seemed like a lot of money. Is that just because of the nature of the break or?
Well, in that particular situation, the big.
Thank you.
With that particular situation being that it was in the middle of the intersection of Tenth and Lynnhurst, they had to have the extensive traffic control all four directions, which is a big expense. And it took them two days to get it repaired. Then they had to come back and do the asphalt as well. So it's, it wasn't just a one day and done. Like we see our water department do on a lot of water main breaks, they'll get it in and out. Then we can go and do the repairs.
Are they going to come back and patch that again, or the way it is, that's the way it is?
Yeah, no, they'll be back to do it. That was just to get it opened up as soon as they could. And like everything else, everything's weeks out.
Okay, so, yes, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, go ahead and call for the vote of the claims. All is in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion carries three-zero.
No, there are no utility adjustments?
No utility adjustments, I'm sorry. Great, thank you.
Next report from the Department Supervisors Police. Jason, good evening.
The chief sends his regards.
I bet he does.
I bet he does.
Where's your PowerPoint?
It's forthcoming. Just a couple of quick updates. As you know, we've been fairly bullish this year on our recruitment efforts. We've been down three to four officers on the department most of the year. We're still down three of those positions. However, good news, we gave conditional offers to two more individuals about two weeks ago. They've been through their physicals and are awaiting their paperwork to be approved by perf, one of those individuals. We actually ran two processes concurrently this last time, a general process as well as a lateral. The first individual is from that lateral process. He completed the academy down at IU earlier this year and will graduate with a bachelor's degree on December 17th, I believe. The other individual comes from the fire service and also has limited law enforcement experience, but he will need to go to the academy likely after the first of the year. Once that process was complete, we started another process, another lateral-only process. We have shown some interest in that. We're hoping that prior to the end of the year, we may be able to fill that, that last position that we have remaining on the department. Other than that, quick update on the vehicles, the 10 vehicles, as you know, that were originally ordered in October of last year of '21, have all come in. Six of those 10 have been outfitted. They are on the street now. We're hoping for those last four vehicles to probably be out by the end of this month. And we're awaiting that next round of cars for 2023, hopefully after the first of the year.
Good.
That's all I have. Right.
Great, nice job. Thank you.
Next is our Communications Director. Cheryl?
Good evening again. Just some project updates. The website, the new town website is coming along. There's probably just under 50% of the content moved from the old, the existing site to the new site. We'll continually update that. I shared it's a recent Community Safety and Service Day and then the casual conversations that we just had with some of the residents. And folks are very excited about the new website, so I'll be excited to get it done. The goal for it is November to December. Hopefully, we'll have it ready to go live and roll out at that point, but stay tuned. Just wanted to say thank you for approving the light up Main Street a few minutes ago. I think there's a lot of moving parts involved with it, so it's, it's been a little bit of background work. But I think the community is very excited to have the lights on Main Street. We are going to have another community food drive this year. We're working on locating specific food pantries here in Speedway, along with narrowing down a timeframe. So details are not finalized, but we'll share them as soon as we have those, probably within the next week or so. The last casual conversation with Grant, the town manager, was held last week. That'll be the last one for this year. It was here at the, at the municipal center. It was probably the best attendance that we had. There was great engagement of questions and idea sharing. And anyway, we'll start those again in first quarter of 2023. The next big project that I will be working on is the state of the town. So stay tuned for a date, location, and all those details that will, that I'll share out with the community. Just a rundown of the events that are coming up. A reminder that heavy trash days are this week, the 11th, 12th, and 13th. On October 15th is the United Methodist Church Fall Festival. That will go from 10 to 3. It's a collaboration of food, local artists, and crafts that will be there. October 21st is the Community Wellness and Beauty Open House hosted at Dentistry of Indianapolis. It will go from 6 to 9, and it is hosted at Dentistry of Indiana. The, it's a, from what I understand, it's local female business owners are coming together to share different helpful ways for folks to get on a personal wellness journey. So they'll have food, music, prizes, I'm told. October 21st is the Town Employee Fall Chili Cook-Off. It's, it's done for the town employees for a little team building and individual competition. I will add that I was first runner-up last year. And I don't cook. October 24th is the Speedway High School Music Department Halloween Event. It will be from 6 to 8:00 PM in the auxiliary and main gym, use entrance 13 on the south side of the school. The appropriate age groups for this is aged, sorry, zero to 12. It is $5 per person, per child, excuse me, $5 per child and cash only. October 29th will be the Speedway Lions Club Costume Contest and Speedway Parks and Rec Trunk or Treat. Both events will take place at Speedway High School. The costume contest by the Lions will be from 3 to 5 in the auxiliary gym. I know. Is that good or what? Trunk or Treat will follow at 5:00 to 6:30 PM in the parking lot. And then October 31st, Trick or Treat for the Town of Speedway will take place, I showed on the flyer here, on Monday, October 31st from 6 to 8:00 PM. I did announce this this past Friday, and I had the correct date of the 31st. However, I had the wrong day of the week. So corrections have been pushed out. My apologies to the community for the confusion. Again, the Trick or Treat for the Town will be Monday, October 31st from 6 to 8:00 PM. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Great job.
You're welcome.
Cheryl?
Yes, sir.
If you don't cook well, who cooked your chili?
I'm sorry, what?
If you don't cook well, who cooked your runner-up chili?
I actually did. So I looked, I just Googled a recipe of stuff I could throw in a crock pot, and it worked out well. So, yeah, I'm thinking of picking up, picking up pre-made chili this year. Thank you.
Great. Next up, our Economic Developer, Todd Cutt.
Good evening. Just thought I, can I give you a quick rundown on activities over the last month? Just getting out and meeting with companies and stakeholders. Daredevil, Shane, we had a nice meeting last week. Had a good meeting with Doug Bowles and Mark Miles. We're going to try to get on more of a regular calendar. Got something set up in, in mid-November as well. Raleigh Helmling, who represents the IEDC in the motorsports space, is, is helping me with meetings. And we were with DeLara and IndyCar and IndyCar Experience last week, so we had three, three good meetings there. We did the Allison Ride and Drive Event a couple of weeks ago. It worked out that I, they have a, a new business development guy there who I had met through another company I'd worked with in the past. So that's good to have a good, a good relationship there at Allison as well. Also, working with the 5242 Crawford's Road Building that the SRC purchased, I think about a year ago. Rob's helping me get that cleaned out. And we are working with Bob on a, on an RFP for a, we're going to try to lease it out instead of just sitting there. And I have met with two appraisers, and they've indicated that they will get me a number in time for the next SRC meeting. So we'll see how that goes. But that was kind of, kind of what I had on my list. I did get, I know I've talked before about the retail space and the, and the Will Shaw Apartments that an office user was looking at. I'm not sure that, that that's going to go anywhere. After all, they've been pretty quiet recently. But I did have an interesting meeting with a much larger office user last week that's very interested in being on Main Street. So, you know, just trying to kind of find a site that works for him. But it was a, it was a good conversation. We'll see, see where that one goes. But happy to answer any questions or?
That's great. Thank you.
Todd, the 1200 block of Main, like a timeline on where, where we are.
1300 block?
Yep, 1300, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yep, thirteen hundred, I'm sorry. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Um, you know, they were planning on starting to move people in in late October, hopefully. Um, I get to, they, there's a meeting there, uh, every other Wednesday, so I'll be at one on, on Wednesday with, um, the, um, Rigdon guys and, uh, um, Shelby Bowen and, and the whole group, so, um, things seem to be moving along. Uh, you know, we worked, the SRC worked with Shelby on helping him out with some cost overrun, so, um, he's pretty pleased by that, and, you know, they're, um, I think that, I think the Vine and Table and the La Peep will be, you know, they're building those out. I think, um, the, the home decorator is maybe running a little bit behind, but, um, making, making good progress. It's, um, I could, uh, I get a, I get a report from Veritas for the SRC, I could pass those along to you guys and, and give you an idea of.
Okay.
The update.
Thank you.
Todd, when they, um, get almost further along as far as the opening, can we have maybe our, our team go through in video and show the public, um, on the inside what the condos look like?
Yeah.
And those things. Did, is the asphalt down in the back? Is, is that?
In the alley?
Yeah, no, along the parking area.
At the top. I don't think so.
It's just the base coat right now.
Yeah. And then the, uh, the corner, the little pocket park, if you will, with the stage, uh, in, that'll come along, it's about the same time.
It's gonna be a little bit behind, I think, just because of the, the delay this, that Bomar has had on the, on the, um, steel canopy.
Yeah. And they kind of needed that space for storage of materials, too.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Good. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. Chief Fishburne?
Good evening.
Good evening.
What, what Cheryl didn't tell you is there were only two entries in the chili competition last year.
Did, did you notice she had two presentations this evening?
See, I wasn't bringing it up on that.
Chief, did you notice?
And she had two presentations, yeah.
Okay, just wanted to make sure what yours is.
But Chief, I think it's important, she did have slides. She said he's jealous.
Yeah, but the police have guns, and if you have slides, they put the laser on your back, so I, I try to stay away from those.
Wow.
Um, no, I just, just wanted to share with you, we have nearly completed fire prevention. We were able to get to all the schools, but not in. Next year, we hope to get back in. All the preschools that wanted to participate, we were able to accommodate. Um, we got word, uh, week and a half ago that we received a grant from Marathon, and we wrote that grant to help us with the purchase of ballistic vests for our seats. Not every firefighter will have one, but Marion County is in the process of having a task force. We have Sergeant Hart and Detective Shipley and Chief Milhorn and Chief Wyatt have been meeting with Marion County because of all the active shooter incidents. It's, it's probably not a matter of if, but a, a matter of when, and we want to be prepared for that, and all of the police and fire departments in Marion County want to cross-train and have kind of the same equipment and expectation, so we're not gonna be fighting the bad guys, but we want to keep our police officers, and if we have to make entry to render aid to someone who's injured, then we're gonna have the vest and we'll, we'll be going in with SWAT and, and those guys. Uh, we're gonna work really closely next year to, to cross-train with Speedway P D when they do theirs, and it's, it's something that's been needed. City of Lawrence has it, I F D is now on board, all the other Marion County departments are, uh, gearing up and, and getting ready, so we hope to have that in place, and we're gonna use that Marathon grant money for that, so they were, they were really gracious to help us. We are beginning evaluations for our employees. Uh, that process takes a little bit of time, and then we were notified three weeks ago that we'll begin our I S O rating process. Uh, then, we, we've already given them a lot of data and all of that, and, uh, the fact that we did a really, um, good job four and a half years ago when we did the, the rating, they're able to pull some of that data to see where we're at. Our, our, you know, we're connected to a training facility now, we think that'll help us, because we actually have a contract with the state certified training facility in, in the tower over at Wayne, the E S E C., so, um, really, that's all I have. We, we are, we are, uh, we did make an conditionary offer and an intent to hire, uh, which will be a lateral process, firefighter that's, that, uh, is already in perf, has already been through the academy, uh, an academy that we approve of, and hoping to get him on sometime around the first of November, just to save us that open spot in overtime, so.
Sure.
Any questions at all?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next up, Tammy Smith, Parks and Recreation.
Good evening. I have a whole lot today. Um, I want to give an update on our Leonard project, uh, that's going on, the tennis courts, the painting started on the surface of the tennis courts last week. Um, I believe the line striping might get started this week. Um, it's looking really good over there, we're still waiting on benches, um, they're kind of on back order, um, hopefully we'll be getting those in the next few weeks, and that will complete our projects over there, Leonard for the land-water conservation fund grant that we received. So we're, we're real excited about that, people are using, um, the little table tennis, and I've seen people at the checkerboard chess table, and, um, it, it's fun to see people utilizing the new, uh, instruments, the musical instrument playground equipment, the kids are having fun with that. Um, Cheryl mentioned, we have trunk or treat on, uh, Saturday, October twenty-ninth, um, from five to six thirty. If there's any businesses still interested in participating, they can, uh, email me at tsmith@speedwayin.gov. And then the other thing I wanted to mention is just reminding everybody on November first is typically the day we winterize the bathrooms and close them up for the winter season. And other than that, we're gearing up for our winter season. That's all I got.
Great. Any questions?
No, just appreciate all you do, Tammy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is Public Works, Rob Wedning.
Good evening, council. Um, we'll start off with sanitation. Um, they treated a hundred and two million gallons of water sent back to, uh, Big Eagle Creek, and I D M. was out to do their inspection on the old landfill, and they were very pleased with the maintenance and the, and everything on that process, on that process. And they also, uh, observed our, um, uh, site inspections for construction with our plumbing inspector, and went on site with him to pretty much all the construction sites, and they seemed very pleased with how things were going there, so we're good on that. And, uh, with water department, they produce six, sixty-five million gallons, and they've been flushing the mains and hydrants as well. Pretty much business as usual there, but we know the busy season's coming. We're not gonna say it, but we know it's coming. And then for the street department, uh, speaking of, uh, your inspector, he passed his I C C test today, which is International Code Council to be, uh, for residential, so he is working now to get his, uh, uh, a commercial license after that, so he's continuing with his education, and we have him to look forward in the future. He's young, he's ready to go, so.
Great. Fantastic.
And then, uh, speaking of heavy trash, Cheryl brought it up. If, uh, anybody does have heavy trash and, and they want to get rid of it sooner, instead of waiting like three weeks for it to show up, you can call Ray's. I think it's twenty dollars per pickup, they'll come to your home, even if it's not a heavy trash week, but pick it up for twenty dollars, so.
Is that more than one item, or is that?
No, that's one per item.
That's per item.
So if you have like a refrigerator out there, or a couch, or whatever, but no TVs, no electronics.
No, that's, that's good. I don't know, yeah, because everybody's waiting around and.
Right, right. And well, you see, you know, people set it out, and, you know, they think, oh, it's the next week or two, and you don't want to sit out there for a couple of weeks.
Right.
So, that's all I have.
Rob, any, um, any changes in performance related to waste management taking over?
No, um, the only, the only changes that we've had is, uh, we've dealt with Calvin Davis for a long time. He's staying with Ray's on their other side with recycling and demo, so we, we got a new representative here, met with him last week. All, we have all the same drivers, same trucks as we've had in the past, so I foresee everything to stay business as usual on that, so.
Thank you.
When are they switching up, uh, containers?
I have not heard, and I really don't see a big change there. I think it's gonna be more probably a sticker, because those totes are very expensive, and they can put that sticker right over the raise, this is just, that's what I'm foreseeing, because those, those totes are expensive, so. That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is the report from, uh, council members, David Lindsay.
Just have one item tonight, I'd like to congratulate our boys soccer team from the high school. They won the soccer sectional last Saturday night, um, and wish them luck this Wednesday on the twelfth, as they compete in the regional championship. That's all I have.
Fantastic. Thank you. Vice President Gary Rex.
Not a lot, just, uh, kind of reminding everyone to, you know, the sun's going down a little bit earlier, we'll have a time change sometime.
November.
November, I think. Uh, that'll make, uh, us driving, a lot of us driving home in the dark, um, and just be aware of children, that, um, as we hear in October especially, as kids are out, uh, involved in different things, but particularly Halloween weekend, just be aware, that's it.
Okay, uh, closing, uh, comments from the president, um, council president. I just want to remind everybody, um, you know, we have a small community, uh, but we have a large number of people traveling through our community. Crawfordville Road, uh, becomes challenging at times, and a lot of our side streets become challenging. Um, and given the fact that a lot of our kids are gonna be walking to school, um, it's important that we, you know, keep an eye out for them, making sure that they're safe from that standpoint. Also, um, uh, just keep an eye out, um, making sure that if you do see something out there that, uh, doesn't seem right, it's probably, you ought to report it and, uh, let the police determine exactly, uh, what the issue is. Um, you know, this is the time of year that a lot of, um, I'm sure people breaking into cars and doing what they shouldn't be doing, but, uh, appreciate it. Everybody be safe and, uh, have a, uh, a great Halloween from that standpoint. That's all I've got. There's no other, uh, discussion. It's, uh, seven forty-two, I'm gonna call, uh, this meeting to adjourn.